Calls being ordered, please. Roll call, please.
Mayor Tom Bailey.
Here.
Mayor Prokén Marfrin.
I am here.
Councilmember Robert Arnold.
Here.
Councilmember Ryan Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Todd Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Raymond Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Melissa Hu.
Here.
Can we run for the Republican?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I seek a motion to approve the agenda for October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
I'll make a motion.
Five seconds. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Pinkwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Boots.
Yes.
Mayor Prokén Richard.
Yes.
Councilmember Machok.
Yes.
Councilmember Hessman.
Yes.
Councilmember Arnold.
Yes.
And Mayor Vans.
Yes.
Mr. Harry.
All right, moving right along, I see that our guest of honor, Dr. Moore, is not alive yet. So we'll then move on when we go back to him when he arrives. All right, we'll go ahead and open up the meeting to the public. The purpose of this agenda item is to allow persons to comment on agenda items that will be considered at this meeting. This is not a forum for debate or for which questions will be answered. The city council will consider all items and questions and decide if they wish to address those items during the relevant agenda items. All persons addressing the city council are asked, limited, their comments to no more than three minutes. Do we have anybody that'd like to make a comment? Yes, sir. Yes. Thank you.
How's it going, everybody?
I'm from a mosquito and baby.
I'm with a camp.
Good to see you guys. I will try to be short and sweet. I apologize if I've worked this out, but it's not a big deal. It usually come in October anyway, so just here to wrap up the mosquito season. We have a long time been a contractor for township and cities all around the state and obviously including city Montrose. Chili spring, usually we start truck spraying the week prior to Memorial Day every year. We really didn't start until June, if you guys remember back. Memorial Day weekend was pretty cold. And then the summer really was filled with summer thunderstorms. And June and July out here was really, really busy for mosquitoes. They were pretty bad, really peaky around the Fourth of July. But thankfully, later end of August and in September, we dried out. Even with the current rain events that we've had, we're still under a moderate drought. So when we get a drier fall, it really eases us into some nice pleasant new mosquito activity. So September was beautiful, still really nice out. We had twenty-nine residents call the office this season, one hundred and forty-six miles of roadway sprayed in the city. We treated twenty-seven standing water sites with about two hundred pounds of veco baggie. Twenty-four homes in the village were sprayed by backpack for people's request. We had ten CDC traps set out here and tested for arbovirus activity. So we have West Nile virus, Eastern rhinocidus, cephalitis, and St. Louis anaphylitis. Thankfully, we had no activity in Montrose City or Township. I have an arbovirus update if you guys want that. The total mosquito pools tested in the state were about fifty-three hundred. The state tested, including with us, this is all the county data, APM's data, and Department of Health and Human Services. There was over eighty thousand mosquitoes tested in the state. And only three birds in Genesee County tested positive for West Nile. So that's been popular. People ask about what's going on with arbovirus activity. Some years are worse than others. If we do have a positive pool, you guys will all be notified during that time and there's kind of a protocol. One thing we've noticed, the railroad tracks here are a major, major breeding problem. We got on the four-wheeler and treated a lot of those ditches, not only in the village or the city here, but all of the township. And they go the whole, like, so when we get those bigger rain events in the summer, they just fill up with water and they are full of larvae. So we've been treating the water and actually spraying with the four-wheeler. So we've got a little fogger unit and it kind of go right through the township and city here. It works really good. Lastly, we treated four hundred and forty-seven catch bases in the city for larval control. And we have the graph there. Really had a season high, New Jersey light trap on sixty-five females on the sixth of August. So we've got spikes in June and July, another spike in August. But yeah, it was, it was a bit of a roller coaster. Thankfully, we eased into the fall here. I will get another copy of that contract sent over to you guys. I looked, I apologize on our side too, we'll sort that out. But thank you guys for your continued business and any questions for me?
Sixty-five females, what's the, how long of a trap is that? Is that a day?
Yeah, so, you know, there's light traps, they dawn to dusk, they turn on Sunday nights and Tuesday nights. So we collect them Mondays and Wednesdays, so that's one run. But yeah, we watch them from usually early May until right around September fifteenth. So keep an eye on what's going on, kind of tells you where your hot spots are, so. Yes, sir.
Is there anything other than the railroad tracks that you noticed that maybe we can take care of or address the residents on?
Containers are always a popular one. You'd be shocked how many folks are breeding their own mosquitoes. I try to say every year. It's not, I've seen mosquito larvae in a Gatorade cap in someone's yard. So buckets, wheelbarrows, old boat tarts, that's a big one. Any kind of clutter, even in the gutters, believe it or not, we've seen them up in gutters. So yeah, just good housekeeping.
A few years back when we had Rose, they got together with the school and the National Honor Society.
Okay.
And the kids went around to the different houses and areas and pointed out things and stuff with, one of those guys had his, they did that a couple of years.
Okay.
They said it cut their numbers down quite a bit. I don't know if that's something that you guys have the time, the manpower, the desire to do, but it seemed to work pretty good. And maybe it's something that could go out in another area too.
Yeah, that's a great idea, go to schools. Yeah, get taught to township too, I'm sure they put some kind of educational thing together. A lot of it truly is in Genesee County, since it's my tenth year with APM, I've kind of worked at and shop around the state. Most of Genesee County is a summer floodwater problem. So there's over sixty species in the state up north. We get spring mosquitoes in spring swamps. Out in the thumb, in Caseville and Seaway, they get cat tail mosquitoes, terrible. In Fragway, these are cat tail hawks out there. Here, it is just a dice roll, a rainy dance is what I've been calling it. If we get four or five inches of rain, you can guarantee seven to ten days later, we're gonna have a hatch. So those mosquitoes are containers as well, but you're looking at ditches and flooded yards. Yep. So it's not necessarily a city issue as much as the township as well. All the ditches in the township, they, they seem to fill up with water, so.
The one spot that we found was always an issue that has been a problem to get addressed is the, we call it the black lagoon behind the school.
Yep.
That's, that's always muddy, nasty, gross. And for a while, they were just beginning to treat it, they didn't realize it was there.
Okay.
It's, and then just across the fence is the orchard's got a drainage ditch there.
Yep.
And they didn't know that was there either, I don't know if you guys know.
The lagoon is on our spring site, so that does get hit every spring. Cool. So we've got some new GIS software, so it's pretty black and white, but it's getting hit and it's not. And anyone of you guys wants to go check out water, including residents, like if you guys have anything in your yard you want us to look at, or the council, any of you guys want us to go, all you gotta do is call the office and we'll get guys out and check it out for you. It's not a, okay, not a problem, so. Any other questions?
I think we're good.
All right, thank you. I'll get you, Joe.
Yep, appreciate it.
All right, moving right along. Do we have any more citizens that would like to make a public comment?
Can I ask a question about that? Or do I need to wait?
Yeah, yeah, do you want to ask your then director?
Yes, so I know that there is, I'm fifty-seven issues with the drain system. So there's right now water, I know Sam's been trying to work with the county and potentially the state. Will that be an issue as well because the water's not draining?
Yeah. Any ditches that don't create a gap?
So it's not, it's not a ditch, it's the actual city number.
Oh, okay.
So you can see like the economy part is, it's filled up, or in the city, the street, you can see it stacked up. So that's something else potentially to that could be causing on the seawalls as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, what do you want to, are we gonna nominate a assistant month for November?
I thought we could go back to that section for both of those items.
When, when, when both of those?
If we get too far gone, then we'll go ahead and make the nomination.
Okay, I already have a nomination.
Okay. Is that the treatment group?
Yes.
All right, anybody else? Let's move on to presentations. Would you like to introduce Kim Lynch, our Internal Treasure Finance Manager?
Hi, everyone, are you okay if I stay here?
Sure.
I'm just gonna give you a little update. This is my reflection since June, since I've been in here. I know I've seen some of you guys coming over the past few months. But this is tailored to the basic good, bad, and ugly of what I've seen since June. It's not all, it's not all bad. But so I'm just gonna read it and feel free to comment afterwards or ask any questions. But I wanted to provide counsel with a clear and honest summary of where we've been, what we've overcome, and what lies ahead in the Treasurers Department, its frankly, the good, bad, and ugly. So the good. Since stepping in this past June, the Treasurers Office has made steady and measurable progress. Bank reconciliations are now occurring and balanced through September. The tax account has been fully rebalanced and all prior season distributions have been completed. Regular reporting cycles are in place, monthly budget to actuals are being distributed to our department heads, and financial transparency has strengthened across our departments. The hiring of a new Deputy Treasurer, Marcy, has brought much needed stability and consistency to daily operations. Training is progressing well. I feel collaboration between staff and leadership has improved and internal communication is stronger. We've established a rhythm that should position the city for a much smoother and more predictable year-end process moving forward. So the bad. The financial cleanup process has been more extensive than anticipated. Reconciliation efforts uncovered historical posting errors, inconsistent general ledger use, and unrecorded transfers that required detailed review and adjustment. Many of these issues have now been resolved and what has been done last year is done. Preliminary budget to actual figures suggest that certain expenditure categories may exceed original budgeted amounts for the prior fiscal year, six thirty, twenty twenty-five, which may be highlighted during our upcoming audit. Additionally, analyzing the first six months of the current fiscal year that we're in will be crucial to ensure accurate projections and a solid, realistic budget and amendments for twenty-five, twenty-six. Workload intensity remains high, especially with audit preparation overlapping with ongoing operations, but steady progress continues toward full completion. So the ugly. When I began in June, no budget had been adopted for the new fiscal year and no summer tax rule had been created. And the city's tax account, I said tax account, I mean property taxes that the city collects and holds and is responsible for distributing by state statute, basically every two weeks, held over five hundred thousand dollars in undispersed collections from the prior year. Funds that should have been cleared and distributed months earlier. Several taxing authorities have reached out in concern and prompt action was necessary to restore compliance and credibility. That was my first hurdle I took on. Equally concerning is the risk that comes with the unreconciled bank accounts. Several accounts were unreconciled or partially reconciled for the previous, going back six to nine months of unreconciled. Without unreconciled accounts, the city cannot confirm the accuracy of reported cash balances or ensure that transactions have been properly reported. This lack of reconciliation makes it impossible for auditors to verify beginning balances and validate financial statements, which in turn delays or prevents the completion of the audit, which we're about to start. Bank reconciliation serves as one of the most significant and critical internal controls that municipal finance and municipal finance, providing assurance that funds are accurately reported, accounting for and safeguarded. If an audit is not completed, the city risks losing eligibility for our state shared revenue, grant funding, and future borrowing opportunities. In addition, the absence of an audit can lead to increased scrutiny by regulatory agencies, delayed financial reporting, and a loss of confidence from taxpayers, bondholders, and other governmental partners. Completing timely and accurate audits is essential to maintaining financial credibility and the continued flow of revenue to support our city operations. The positive takeaway is that these issues have unidentified address and are now driving significant process improvements. Renewed focus on accuracy, documentation, and oversight is rebuilding the foundation needed to ensure lasting fiscal stability. Looking ahead, the goal moving forward is to gradually scale my workload and costs to the city, hopefully by December first, while transitioning day-to-day operations and customer service functions to our Deputy Treasurer. This will allow for a more sustainable structure, with the Deputy Treasurer remaining the day-to-day activities and myself remaining under a smaller, focused contract to oversee higher-level financial matters, such as our budget development, our audit coordination, and intricate tax-related scenarios. The month ahead will focus on completing the annual city audit and finalizing the winter tax rule. These two projects will mark an important step in stabilizing financial operations and supporting a smooth transaction of day-to-day responsibilities. My closing note, though the road has been complex, the progress since June reflects the city's commitment to integrity and improvement. I'm grateful for the council's support and the awesome teamwork within City Hall as we continue strengthening Montrose's financial operations. The good news is that each challenge faced this year has produced lessons that will hopefully serve us well into the future. And that's all I have.
Do we want to entertain any questions here for her?
That was a pretty good synopsis.
Hmm?
So I think that was a pretty good synopsis.
I thought she would do it.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for all the work that you've done to put off the fires that were, that were there.
And you know, that's a great way you just said that, because I was trying to think of like a real-life situation, other than this is real life. But it reminds me of like if you had a house and it was abandoned and you didn't, you know, someone was living there and then maybe they stopped living there, but still on the house and it was full of their stuff. And then someone comes in and buys it and starts to just clean all the junk out. And then they can kind of see the floors and the walls and go from there. And I think that is kind of what we've been dealing with here. And it makes me happy to be this far on the other side now. I mean, it was, it was a long summer. And I'll be honest, it was a little bit of a blur for me. I have four kids and a husband and I'm like, where did my summer go? It's like Halloween.
Surely, you know, we've had yearly audits and I was around for the audit, I think, yeah, I think everyone here was for the last audit. And Eric's saying how great you were and stuff like that. And then you come in and it looks like, like I say, nobody's home and everything, you have mold all over the place. You want to go by the house or as Mr. Arnold would say, you know, you're putting out fires.
Sure.
Would an auditor, should, should they have caught some of these issues or that's kind of beyond their scope?
No, it's not just beyond their scope and I'm not here to justify their audit. But I will say that just the work I've done, it seems like last fall, mid-winter, is when it just snowed down. And it's like a snowball. I mean, it, it, it was, the numbers were reconciled to six thirty, our financial statements and our books, everything matches. So they didn't, so the problem, by not reconciling your bank account, it's just like your personal checkbook.
You don't know what you're in.
If you start in November not recording your paychecks coming in and where you're spending your money by June, you've got a big mess. And so we had to have those numbers pretty reasonable and what we feel is accurate and true in order for them to audit that. And your cash affects almost every single transaction in the city. You know, every aspect is linked to your cash account. And so by not having those reconciled, and that started to blend out and fall apart in the winter. And so.
Yeah, with the, I wasn't surprised if it didn't.
So they wouldn't know, they wouldn't know.
With four different city managers and a treasurer that was absent.
Yeah.
This is.
Yeah.
This is what happens.
And I mean, I guess what I, like, if you wanted to think of the next step, if you wouldn't have put out the fire or stopped when you did, is you would have had your auditors show up and say.
Bad things.
Yeah, and so now it's like, okay, we were able to like come in and, there's still gonna be, I think, some findings and as far as, you know, when I mentioned you overexpent in certain departments, but I can't fix that.
I can't go back and spend it.
I can't ethically go in and change those numbers and make it look all pretty for them to come in.
Right.
So, but I do feel that the numbers that we're handing over to them, you know, what we're reporting and what we owe at six thirty is accurate and what's in our bank account is really in our bank account, and so.
I do have one question. As a city councilman, you know, and stuff, how is a city councilman supposed to figure that, you know, that there's something like this not being done, like reconciliation not being done and that kind of stuff? Because we take the reports that were given here, none of us are accountants.
Oh, yeah.
And none of us should be going through post-post because this is gonna be a problem. So is there really any way a city councilman would really realize, other than the fact that, you know, yes, we didn't have a treasurer and we were trying to rectify that, well, we had a treasurer.
Right.
You get what I mean? Is there any way for us to really know?
I think it's just communication, communication with probably the city manager and then it, you know, it trickles down.
With four different managers, so that's just gonna go.
Yeah, and so, and really paying attention, I know it's boring and I don't, like, we'll get our audit and it'll be a hundred pages. Who wants to read through that, like, nobody. But on a monthly basis, comparing your revenues, your budget to your actuals, you know, that's where we're, and just building on it from month to month, year to year, being involved in that budget process and knowing what should be there. And, no, you don't have to know the chart of accounts, and just asking questions. You know, if you, you guys ever have questions for me or anything, like even just, hey, how's audit going? Are we still, is everything still on track? How are bank reps doing every month? I mean, now, Marcy and I've got it down, we can just like, October will be a breeze.
Yeah, 'cause my question is, is how do we prevent this from happening in the future if it happens when we didn't have a treasurer that was getting an accurate report?
Sure.
We had four different city managers that had no idea what was going, is there, you know, and that's, you know.
And I'll say to you, in my honest opinion, it's hiring qualified, skilled individuals. I, I honestly, when working through all of this and making numerous adjustments and journal entries and that, I, I think that skill set was lacking. And it's hard with small municipalities because you guys are held accountable to the same rules, laws, audits as large municipalities. And so it's, yes.
And we didn't have a budget to hire.
Yes, yeah, so you get creative and I think we'll get there, I really do. I mean, I think we'll get there.
You said one word that hit it right on the nail on the head was communication. But I mean, you can also ask, and there has to be trust between the people we put in their positions and this council and faith in you.
Yeah.
You get the job done.
Yeah, yes, a hundred percent, yeah.
Anybody else? No? Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah.
All right, our next speaker who's presenter will be Connor Zook from Brownfield Consulting.
Yep. Hi, everyone, I was here back in, it was the mayor June. Speaking of the last dated obsolete building, sticking with that theme, one oh six West State Street, still needs a lot of love. So this is a Brownfield plan for that building. It's looking to capture a hundred forty thousand in eligible activities over a twenty-year period. Why twenty years? So that Oprah goes approved for the property, that basically a basic taxes of twelve years, so that a hundred forty thousand will occur mainly on the benefit that lasts eight years. To get ahead of it, a lot of municipalities will ask me, what's the risk of adopting this? What is our, our risk, our safety? No. Again, they have to make, they have to complete a project, they have to provide receipts, proof of payment, they have to do the work in order to get reimbursed. And then also they have to pay their taxes first, verify that they can pay them before we're then had a check. No risk, no government. That said, it is a twenty-year plan, a hundred forty thousand. Total investment due to that building is about two point one million, probably closer to two point two now, just since the last event here, cost going up. It's gonna create about two to four jobs and four departments. That's it, I'm here to answer any questions you may have on the project or Brownfields in general.
I think it's been presented fairly well so far.
Yeah.
Kind of like the speed and the subdue and the share. I think, I think we have to dig, because I know, I'm talking to some of the people who've been around Longmont High, that they had a gas station there with tanks above. Are those still there, do they need to be removed?
Contaminated, sorry.
No, so sampling did occur around the building to make sure that soil was suitable, not contaminated, and they came back clean. There is a little arsenic, but that's not, that's not a gas station contaminant.
Nope, naturally for it. They did, they did test for petroleum contaminants.
You good? All right, thank you, Mrs. Zook. All right, why don't we go ahead and step back now to citizens of the month category? Go ahead and make your nomination.
I make the motion for a citizen of the month of November of twenty twenty-five. The individuals who came out and helped managing I and Plan B, they support.
Do you have all the names and addresses and everything?
Um, I, Joe, do you have them? Could you get it?
Yeah. I appreciate you coming out there.
It was fun.
All right, it was.
You should try it sometime, Mayor.
I think I'm working out there.
All right, we're gonna take a roll call, then.
Councilmember Hessman.
Yes.
Councilmember Arnold.
Yes.
Councilmember Machok.
Yes.
Mayor Prokén Richard.
Yes.
Councilmember Pinkwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Boots.
Yes.
Mayor Vans.
Yes.
All right, now, close that open, we'll leave it open if he shows up. We'll go ahead and do it, if not, we'll see you another day or something. All right, consent agenda, I would seek a motion to approve items A through N on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve items A through N on the consent, on the consent agenda with the correct monthly city foot report that was submitted today and we remove the current report that was submitted in our council packet this afternoon.
Do we have any discussion?
Yes. Well, first of all, I like, I like the idea how they do these budgets now, where they show the percentage of how they're supposed to, where we should be at, at this time of the year, we should be at about thirty-two percent. So that's what we did at the union, so, you know, when we, when I was on the fit up committee, you can take a quick look and see where we're at. I'm just curious, for the treasurer, are we gonna move monies? Because they're at sixty-eight point. Um, I'm just curious, for the treasurer, are we gonna move monies because they're at sixty-eight point eight-two percent now? And I know in the union, when I was on fit up, we would have to move money so we would have money to pay those folks.
Do you want me to answer?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. So, uh, I indicated in my report that my next goal after we get through the, uh, tax roll and audit is to really start looking at what was adopted. Because, like, as you may remember, we were two weeks out from July first when this budget was adopted. We don't have any real concrete backup for those numbers. It was more just based on, well, this is what was adopted previous year. So we'll look at what was last year's actuals, where are we at this year, what is the plan? And then hopefully mid-year, December, January, we'll propose some budget adjustments.
Yeah, 'cause, I, at, at this point, um.
And I will say, just because obviously that's the department I fall into, and as I'm looking over, um, here, I think, I know that that department did come in under last year.
Oh, I'm sure it did.
Considerably.
Yeah, so, but there were over, there were other departments that were over and it, it doesn't, it doesn't really work like that. Oh, treasurer, your department, you were under, so you can be over next year. And as a whole, your general fund in each department needs to stay within the budgetary means, so.
Well, maybe not enough money was put into that, um, account, and I know that's when I was on the fit up, you'd say, well, next time around, we need a little more money. Because I know it's since July first at twenty-three, it looks like twenty-seven thousand was spent in that department and twenty-three ninety-nine, so. And then just.
And looking at how the allocation of wages and pringles and things were built in and what we think maybe we should be moving forward. You don't wanna get too aggressive mid-year. I think we need to make sure that we stay within, obviously, our means and adjusted. This is a year of rebuild, I will say. And where the real key, um, planning comes in is into next fiscal year budget, where we have the appropriate amount of time. We have the individuals in place, and now we're really building, um, a concrete budget.
So if any accounts run up to that at this point, when, uh, you, when we get near a hundred percent, you let us know, you move monies?
Yes, that's my goal. Make, do mid-year budget adjustments.
Okay.
Yeah. Or maybe there's another department that's not really spending what they were getting, so we can bring that one down or something like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Done? All right, we take a roll call.
Councilmember Pango?
Yes.
Councilmember Booth?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Richard?
Yes.
Councilmember Muncha?
Yes.
Councilmember Heslop?
Yes.
Councilmember Arnold?
Yes.
Mayor Baines?
Yes.
All right.
Thanks, Ben.
All righty. And now we're gonna be moving on to our public hearing. We'll be entertaining the public hearing for Brownfield Plan for Parcel number sixty dash seventeen dash five eight one dash zero zero eight, West State Street, Montrose, Michigan, four eight four five seven. At seven thirty-four. Which is any question? No, nobody? All right, and I will close, seven thirty, well, seven thirty-four and a half. All right, moving right along, this is a public hearing for zoning text amendment, Article fourteen hood, plan, plan, uh, unit development district. All right, we'll open that up in public. At seven thirty-five. Again, if there's no one that wants to contribute, we would close it at seven thirty-five and a half. Moving on to a public hearing for proposed ordinance number four six one, an ordinance amending the City of Montrose Code of Ordinance number four three four, Article three entitled GBI of General Business License. Do you have anyone in the public that would like to contribute to that? At seven thirty-six.
Nothing.
Nothing? All right, well, we close at seven thirty-six and a half. And I close the public hearing. All right, again, if there's no old business, we're moving on to new business. Number one, consider resolution approving a Brownfield plan for the proposed Ramby LLC redevelopment project at one oh six West State Street, Montrose, Michigan, four eight four five seven in the City of Montrose.
No, I, I'm not, uh, the memorandum and the extensive page, and I wanna thank Connor for your assistance with, uh, Brownfield. Certain work with county, it's been awesome experience, but, uh, the memorandum, um, gives essentially the data of what Connor just said and also what its prospective view is. And, and just so you know, for city council application, the DDA received a pass-through agreement, uh, last, well, it was the last week, the week before, when we sent it up. And they did unanimously approve. Uh, we had very, we had very good discussion, uh, on that pass-through, um, you know, consideration of the property, the extensive economic development that, uh, the DDA, uh, myself and consultant working on for the City of Montrose. So, it was very productive, and, uh, the report, uh, certainly helps, uh, with that. And it certainly gives an idea of where we're going as a, as a city, uh, in the long term. So, any questions? I'll be happy to answer. Of course, I'll, I'll, I'll pump to Connor relative to Brownfield and any, any of that stuff, so.
I will start. I will make a motion that we approve the resolution approving the Brownfield plan for the proposed Ramby LLC redevelopment project, one oh six West State Street, Montrose, Michigan, four eight four five seven in the City of Montrose. I fully support.
Can we get a figure?
Discussion.
Or do something else?
No, I think it's, um, I read the sweetie, property we have in Florida. And it'd be nice with the, the apartments and possible business going on in the main floor and apartments, because I know there's such a shortage for housing at this time in this country. The, uh, I know the councilway's councilman, uh, young man right here, this is some of the best presentation materials. We're gonna see it in a long time as far as organization, easy to read, easy to understand, very well, I'm impressed overall.
Nice to see you come prepared.
Yes.
All righty, any other discussions? All right, we get a roll call right now.
Councilmember Muncha?
Yes.
Councilmember Arnold?
Yes.
Councilmember Booth?
Yes.
Councilmember Heslop?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Richard?
Yes.
Councilmember Pango?
Yes.
Mayor Baines?
Yes.
Item two, consider agreement with Benzini or Benzinsky and Company user rate study.
I'll make a motion to, uh, agree to the agreement with Benzinsky and Company of user rate study.
Support.
I like the fact that it's completely grant funded.
Okay, we move on for discussion. Good job, Kevin.
You said.
Excellent.
She got it.
Paul was there, sir.
Laurie got it.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
I'm a little, I'm a little nervous to find out the results of the study, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna be okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Have a good evening.
I'll be in touch with you tomorrow.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Safe travels.
Thank you.
All right, and we get a roll call, then we have no further discussion.
Mayor Potem Richard?
Yes.
Councilmember Booth?
Yes.
Councilmember Heslop?
Yes.
Councilmember Arnold?
Yes.
Councilmember Pango?
Yes.
Councilmember Muncha?
Yes.
Mayor Baines?
Yes.
All righty, item number three, consider PSA amendment number one for additional services related to the City DWAM, rank and police, with, police and Vanderbrink Engineering Incorporated.
I make a motion the city council approve the PSA amendment number one in the amount of fourteen thousand seven hundred for the final FSR to EGLE within thirty days for these additional services that are one hundred percent grant funded at no cost to the city.
I love it.
Support.
Any discussion?
Works for me.
Okay, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Heslop?
Yes.
Councilmember Muncha?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Richard?
Yes.
Councilmember Arnold?
Yep.
Councilmember Booth?
Yes.
Councilmember Pango?
Yes.
Mayor Baines?
Yes.
Okay, number four, consider resolution to enable the City of Montrose eligibility for fire insurance withholding program.
I'll make a motion that, um, it's number four, the resolution enable the City of Montrose eligibility for fire insurance withholding program. Support.
Now, discussion, uh, is that where, like, if there's a fire that does, at times, the city can get money back from, uh, fires on the house? I know we've had some that before, but I'm not sure if that's what it is, makes some clarification.
Yep, correct. Uh, it's important that we are able to hold that in escrow, that the city has had money delivered here for other purposes, so.
That was around when we started doing it, and he's great at it.
Any further discussion?
Can I do, um, you second the question?
Yes. Then we get a roll call.
Councilmember Pango?
Yes.
Councilmember Heslop?
Yes.
Councilmember Arnold?
Yes.
Councilmember Muncha?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Richard?
Yes.
Councilmember Booth?
Yes.
Mayor Baines?
Yes.
Item five, city council consider live streaming city council meeting policy. Any more discussion? And can we get a motion?
I would make a motion, um, that city council considers adopting the council meeting live streaming policy.
I'll second it.
All right, discussion?
Yep, I would, uh, at present wage for it, I'm gonna believe no on this. There is certain things that I, I do not really care for, and, um, that's why, I mean, it's very much power centered to the mayor, city minister, officer, city attorney, councils kind of work out of this, and it's a drop in the lap. And I just think that it needs to be, I'd like to see, I'd like to see what, how other cities have this written before this was adopted. See if this is standard or not standard. It seems a little off, so that's the only discussion I have, sir.
You know, about six months ago, we did discuss this.
Yep, but now.
I think we had the same questions come up then. Okay, so, as council members, as mayor, as city manager, et cetera, I would say it behooves us to be checking other communities to see. But I don't see where this is an extravagant amount of money that we're asking here.
Not the money.
And it's a transparency issue that this city demands from us.
Not the money.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I guess part of the issue with how this is written, I, I, I don't think there's any disagreement that we need to continue, uh, recording and providing those videos for the public. Um, but when we start, uh, editing out or having the ability to remove sections of that, you do nothing but create distrust in the system. And you're also creating a situation where some people have additional powers over others. I think that we could strike the entire third and fourth paragraphs under policy. Uh, for my support, I would like to see us increase the times that these videos will be available. I'd like to see them, uh, available for a minimum of two years, after which, uh, they could be archived for a minimum of three additional years. Um, and then, once the retention period expires, instead of just automatically deleting them, I would like to see it come back to council for approval under destruction.
I, I would have to agree with you on that, Ron, as far as the, uh, chopping pieces out here and there, it was willy-nilly. I think there legally, that this might be a point where we'd ask the attorney if that is a situation where we could, we could actually be violating laws doing that.
I didn't read it. Is chopping anything out? Or have any authority to chop anything out?
Uh, it's mayor, chief administrator, Russian, the city attorney, this discussion may at times direct a termination or interrupting of live streaming services, such direction will only be given in certain things. And, um, when consent debate is considered misleading, defamatory, potentially inappropriate to be published, um.
To me, I read that as it's, if something is happening, they can decide to cut it. I, I don't read that as they can go in and edit it.
Right, but if you're following it, it's all that.
Whether you weigh, whether you conditionally, one person talks.
Take it to approval to the third.
So. Um, I'm just worried about a violation of open meetings act where we've decided that this is a form that people can do it, and all of a sudden, boom, all of a sudden, they can't get it anymore. Um, I, I, and it, and it will look like we're trying to hide something, even if it's, if it's defamatory, I don't, that's, that's my concern. Um, subjective. And, and the question is, is can they edit it out later? And the live stream can't. Uh, and if it's showing one and then deleting out the, you know, the recording later because it was deemed defamatory, this is, this becomes a government part of the record as soon as the city decides to publish it. Um, if we delete things off there, I think we're in violation of the open meetings act. And I don't think we can just cut things off whenever we don't want somebody to hear something. I think that's, I think that's what we're getting at. I think, I think we're gonna have trouble with it.
And I agree with that.
Yeah.
But can we get the attorney's opinion on this? Could that be a violation of law if we allow that to happen?
Right, that's why we're bringing it up.
Yep.
And it's something I don't think we need to make a decis- decision at this time. I do wanna have videotape of whatever, how we got it done. It doesn't make any difference to me. I'm always, my job, I'm in the spotlight, so I don't care if people record me. This is Mark, and this is who I am. And I was raised to act in a professional fashion, which I do, so I'm clear. Uh, but, yeah, I just don't like the idea. I agree with, uh, council, council member Arnold and Heslop, that those paragraphs I find kind of, um, um, concerning, and I would like to really see this one set aside for the next meeting, have the attorney go through, because it's dropping, it's in the lap, and it's kind of a lot of news, just up here, and so we can do a little bit of research and see what really we should do. That's, I would rather have it set aside. For the most part, we're all on city page. We just wanna make sure it's a good idea that doesn't cause more problems in the vision of the future.
And that.
Agreed.
I, I have another concern. I think that when, also, when we do post them, that I think it needs to be on a platform, whether it's our own, you know, that people can stream from this. But I don't want it locked behind some sort of, you know, paywall or, uh, something where you have to join something in order to do it. A platform like, a platform like.
It would be on YouTube website, yeah.
If, if it's there, that's fine. If you mention multiple, if you mention different, uh, social media services, I'm just saying, I would prefer it not be behind, say, Facebook, which requires a membership and a page of your own and all that, rather than a very basic, you know, let's say, something like YouTube, where you can go on and view it without any kind of additional login. That would be my other concern.
I think the idea of YouTube was a great idea initially, but we ran into a situation where it needed to be sanctioned by the city.
Yeah.
And it wasn't. And, and so if we're not posting it to social media, if we're hosting it ourselves, then there's no issue, because we can do that. I, I'm saying, should we choose to go down a social media post, let's make it one that's open and easily accessible.
I agree, because like Facebook can decide to edit it themselves, and I don't know how much.
And also, if you don't have a, if you don't have a Facebook account, you can't view it.
All right, I have a question.
Okay, listen.
Um, if the attorney goes over it, he looks at it, he gets rid of what shouldn't be there. If there is things that shouldn't be there, then we can vote on it next.
Next meeting.
Meeting.
That's what I suggest. That, that's why I would recommend at this point that we set this aside, because I think it's asking a lot for the attorney just to drop in his lap and make a decision now. He's gonna have. That's what I said, that, that's why I would recommend at this point that we set this aside, because I think it's asking a lot for the attorney just to drop in his lap and make a decision now, he's gonna have to go through, get on his computer, look at what case is, what, what law is, and stuff like that, and figure it out.
I don't want it set aside completely, I just want to kick the ball into his court.
Yep, I'll set it aside to the next meeting.
Yeah.
I, I, just to set, I mean, I think a motion to table here, put it on the table, and you can review it next month, I think about the table as part of.
Uh, well, tables, set aside tables, same thing.
Yes, I'm saying, yes, but you can, you, you're empowered to make that motion.
Well, the motion already been made, so, adopt this, so.
And then you can make a motion to table.
Okay, can we get a motion to table?
Can I change my motion?
Or, or, or does, or does she need to withdraw her motion, I can review.
No, a motion to table can be made at any time, you can put your motion on the floor.
Okay, I make a motion to table this, or review and bring it, and then the attorney can please bring it back at the next meeting for recommendations.
Support.
And a motion to table, there's no discussion, so it's just a.
Okay, all right, can we get a roll call, vote please?
Councilmember Who's?
Yes.
Councilmember Arnold?
Yes.
Councilmember Metchum?
Yes.
Councilmember Heslop?
Yes.
Mayor Richard?
Yes.
Councilmember Pango?
Yes.
Mayor Banks?
Yes.
Okay, who's coming?
Sorry about that, when it comes to, so they, um, who had mentioned, I don't know what the question, anytime something is acceptable to the city is considered posting, then it falls under FOIA, it falls under the statute of retention period.
Which might answer your question, but along with people too, because there isn't a statute of FOIA.
Thank you, council.
All right, let's see, it's all green on something. Okay, um, we got that finished. Number six, report on community development block grants, EDBG funding. So, do we have any questions or discussion regarding that that we, anybody saw?
Nobody, and it's good advice.
Yeah, it's spelled without W.
Yep, I agree, okay, so it doesn't require a motion?
Oh, so we don't need a motion?
No, it's just required.
Okay.
Number seven, consider amending administrative personnel handbook leave of absences and time off.
I'll make a motion that we amend the administrative personal handbook to abide by state law, which is basically what's included here, council seconded.
All right, any discussion?
Yeah, mayor, if you don't mind, uh, I've been leveling at the personnel handbook, my goal was to give, uh, what we described as the administrative handbook with various other, uh, additional policies, and also, individual, uh, policies that, that I'll be, uh, writing and updating, uh, to you guys at your, in the later meeting, so, uh, I just, I'd have to work through the financials, there's some things that I have to work out with Ken, relative to MERS, because of the current handbook, uh, is not consistent with the application of, um, uh, what employees are contributing and so on and so forth, so, um, just gotta keep those numbers, so, appreciate it, thank you, that's it, thank you, mayor.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'm sorry, my packet is incomplete, it stops, but I, I had written down a section that I guess I want clarification on, because it said that we were, we were modifying, it said, for the city of Montrose, as an employer with ten or less employees, an employee shall not be entitled to use more than forty hours of paid earned sick time in a year unless the employer selects a higher limit, we're literally limiting the, the amount of sick they can use to one week's worth of pay? We, we can increase, that's the state law.
Yeah, this is.
Right, but, but what I'm saying is, uh, if we're setting that, and it's saying we can set a higher rate, are we, or is it going in with this forty?
I think it would be a catch by catch basis, actually, you have a set amount?
Attorney saying no.
No.
Well, it would, it would potentially be contractual, so you'd have to give them at least forty, some people can give more, some people you can give more or more, uh, or you can just set, everyone gets eighty hours or something like that, so that, that forty is the floor, you can agree that you're gonna do the floor, or you can agree that every employee is eighty, or you can say that if they're five years, it's at a risk, you get a certain amount, so there's kind of a bunch of different ways you can stack it up.
Could they do no more than a certain amount and no less than the forty, so that if they need it, they have it, is that feasible?
Yeah, I mean, as an employer, you can give them as much sick time as you want, I mean, that, that's, the, the freedom is limited to, you can't reduce it below the, right, there, the base minimum, that by law, you have to give them forty, if you wanna give eighty or a hundred and twenty, that's.
But you could word it to the point where you could say that no more than.
Right, and they're accrued?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Because, because if they can accrue over, was it sixty nine, almost seventy hours, I, I just, coming out of COVID, and we have some, you know, people, you know, myself included, who are getting older, and the doctor's appointments start adding up, and, you know, also, if we have anybody who has small children, I just, limiting somebody to forty hours just seems problematic.
That should be the rock model.
What, does anybody know offhand what it currently says?
Uh, what it currently says?
Is there?
It has nothing in it, your current personnel handbook, so, this just establishes the minimum, and then, and then, I think what's important.
There's a maximum, not a minimum.
That, that's right, I mean, your entirely is, so, I, I can't talk over other people, you ask me a question, so I'm trying to answer this, is that, the, the current planning, I'm sorry, the current handbook does not have this in here, the current handbook, which I've been working on since June, since I got here, will, will incorporate this, and then if you, as council, wanna say, hey, let's give the part-time individual sixty hours, or, or have it accrued, I can give you some options, I just be very considerate of that, because we have to budget that, um, going forward, uh, as well, and that's not part of the budget, that's not, that's not part of, no, we only have Marcy, is our, is our current part-time employee, uh, everybody here, everybody else is full-time, so, we're, it's not, it's not a tremendous impact, we're not gonna kill the bank if, if you wanna have, uh, fifty hours, but the basis, as the city attorney said, is, is forty, so, this just gives us compliance right now, because we haven't been.
My, my, my question is, is this, the way I read it, it says they can only use, not accrue, so it's not how many that we give them, it's how many they can use at, in a year, so if we give, so if we give them sixty, and we adopt this, because it says they can only use forty, so you give them sixty, but they can't only use forty of it, that's, that's, that's what, so, my, if I remember this correctly, at one point, unless I'm reading that wrong, um, at one point, we just, we eliminated sick time and vacation time, just went to PTO, because it makes it a lot easier, then it's not, it's not sick time or P, it's, it's, it's one chunk of the user, however they want, is that?
We have not established the max, this is just a given baseline, if you want, as council, to give, and then a part-time employee under the state law, a minimum of forty, and then.
That's, the way I'm reading it's not how much we're giving, it's, it's how much they can use, because it says they can only use up to forty.
Correct.
So that means if they have sixty hours of, of time, let's say, because they can't, they can't, they can't use it.
I, I understand, because we haven't set that condition yet.
That's what we're going right now. To, to speak hypothetically, that if you gave fifty hours, they don't use forty, that you could also allow the ten to run away.
Which is required by the state law.
So then, the ten would go on, so they'd start with ten the next year, uh, and then they could keep accruing, and eventually, they could be paid out on this time, so that's another thing, is that it's, it doesn't, it doesn't go away.
I get, I get what you're saying, but if somebody, let's say, let's say, for example, somebody falls and breaks a hand, there are gonna be more than forty hours of, of their sick time, they have fifty hours of accrued sick time, but they can only use forty of it.
Under this rule, currently.
That's, that's what I'm saying, so they have the time, they just can't use it.
Yeah, well, that, that, that's correct.
And it's not, and it's, if we only give them forty hours, it doesn't matter, but my, my, my point is, is it's, it's, we're not limiting on how much we're giving them, that's a different sub- subject altogether, this is how much of the time that they've accrued, that we've given them, that they can use of it, so, if they, and even if we roll it over, so let's say they have forty hours of sick time this year, and then they roll it over to next year, and they get forty plus this ten, or fifty plus this ten, eventually, we're just gonna be paying them up sick time, or they're gonna, you know, lose it or whatever, even if they do get sick, because they can't use it, because it's, it's, it's like, here's your fifty hours of vacation time, and you can only use forty of it, well, what about next year, now you can only use forty of it then, you'll have twenty more hours that year that you can't use either, it, it, that's, that's why I'm saying, I, I, I agree with what Mr. Heslop said about, you know, they can use up to their accrued sick time and no more, uh, which means if we only allot them forty hours, they can only use forty hours, but if they're allotted sixty hours, they can use that sixty hours, um.
So why not just allow them forty hours, to keep it simple, because they're not getting any hours right now as a part-time employee, but now under state law, they are allowed to accrue.
Because we adjourned all of the, all of the time, sick time and vacation, yeah, and, and we haven't had a part-time employee before, so this is something new, and we haven't decided what we're gonna give them for, 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 for their.
Wouldn't it be easier to just get into court, because it states law, it covers all of them.
That's what I thought.
Why are we, so, why are we talking about?
Why are we talking about this part-time, if it covers everybody? I thought, though, if you have, like, PTO, it suffices that, like, if you have something richer than that, and you abide by that, it's, it doesn't apply.
So what do you say, is the only one of our employees that this would change their agreement?
Marcy.
Is a part-time employee.
Marcy.
Yeah.
But, but it, I, that's not right, because it literally says, an employee shall not be entitled to use more than forty hours of paid earned sick time, that's what this states right here.
Unless the employer selects a higher limit, which we have not, we have the first time, first part-time employee for the city that we not identified.
What she gets, yeah.
Right, this is just a given limit, and while we're working on the actual handbook that envelops all of the financials for MERS, to sick time, or, or I should say, PTO time, there's, it, it's, it's a gobbledygook mess, all right, so, we're just starting out, for, I mean, Marcy's been here for six weeks, um, she's grateful if, if she needs to take some time off, she, she has that ability now, as, as an individual who's not a full-time employee, who only is working thirty hours a week to, to get some, uh, sick time, God forbid, if she needs it.
We also have to consider that we recently approved payment of paid time off that people didn't use, and they basically got a bonus, so, that's also something to consider when thinking about these hours.
I guess I'm not, I'm sorry, you guys, I don't understand this, because you're saying part-time, and it's only gonna affect Marcy, but what I'm reading is, it's, it states right here in black and white, that it shall not be for all employees.
Because every other employee is, every other employee has a contract.
Which is a collective bargaining agreement, there's, uh, contractual basis that is consistent with collective bargaining, uh, unit, Marcy is not, she's part-time, she's not full-time, she's not identified in any of that, she's paid twenty dollars an hour, the same amount of money as her custodian.
Okay, but does their contract supersede what this is, then?
I, you, you, I'm sorry, what's she lost in?
I'm, I'm, I'm lost in the fact that this piece of paper in front of me says that the employees shall not use more than forty hours, that encompasses everybody, does their contract supersede this piece of paper, or does this piece of paper supersede their contract, and that they're not going to, like?
That's my question, that's, that's where I, okay.
I, I don't, I mean.
That's where the disconnect is.
What I would suggest is to modify the language either in the personnel handbook to say, um, for the city of Montrose, as an employer with ten or less employees, an employee, employee shall not be entitled to use more than, like, hours, whatever you wanna put in there, of paid earned sick time in a year unless the employer, give it, unless you're gonna select a higher limit, so just get rid of that, or, if there is a collective bargaining agreement that governs sick time.
Yeah.
And that way, our.
Okay.
Yeah, I just don't wanna be deceived, somebody saying they can't use the forty, no, I'm saying Joe will, we, we might have a, a, an, eventually have a new city manager, and they're like, well, if forty's this, you can't use it.
I think, to Joe's point, the change in, change in his move, because that's the full sentence, an employee shall not be entitled to use more than forty hours of paid earned sick time, same sentence, any year, unless the employer selects a higher limit, which is in their contract.
You gotta quit cutting off the end of that sentence.
So, I, I'll amend this, if, uh, to, to suggest what the city attorney did, amended to, I'm sorry, said, is we can, uh, insert that, uh, higher limit, uh, that is, um, unless the collective bargaining unit.
Yeah.
Um, contract within the collective bargaining unit supersedes, um, such sick time, which it does, it, it, it blows this out of the water.
Right.
There is a lot of sick time, or PTO time.
It's so high.
Can we not just include, instead of stipulating anything at all, just say more than their accrued sick time in a year, that way, you're, you're preventing somebody from going negative, they're using all time that they have already accrued, why are we putting a limit on it at all, it seems, it seems like an easy solution, what's that? You could, you could be like me and take my three hundred dollars of sick time that I've got at the counter, and just show up for three months, four months, if you have less than ten employees, that's a big deal.
Yeah, I mean, you, you wanna try to match it to where they're, what they're actually gonna use, and this isn't l- l- legal, so much as this is a, you know, employee bargaining or employee management, is if you give them all seventy hours, but the average person only uses thirty, that's forty that you gotta pay out, so, I, I don't know if you guys, excuse me, if the council as a whole knows kind of what the usage rate is, and what is, you know, the average amount, so that might be something that would be useful.
For a part-time employee, this would be our first.
Yeah, I mean, but for a part-time employee, you might just fly by and, I mean, she can only, if she's working thirty hours a week, she can only have fifty-two hours, she can accrue fifty-two hours in a year, and it's at, at a rate of one, uh, of thirty hours, so, you know what I'm saying, she can use up to fifty-two, she only takes two hours, and you gotta pay her out on fifty hours, but, maybe in the future, we want to modify that.
Thank you.
So I'll make the changes that, uh, I think, Mr. Ryan, uh, for adding that caveat to that, that should clear it up.
Do we wanna have a motion set this aside in the next meeting, or just?
I, I.
We just bring it back to me?
Just bring a info for us for next.
It's on, we have to modify it for the council.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just modifying the, the caveat as a collective bargaining, uh, uh, agreement, and, and go from there, and it will be, again, I hope to give personality a book in hands next month, and, and which will be included, so.
I'll, I'll, I'll amend my motion to include the language, uh, that we approve it with the correction as stated on the record.
Okay.
If we're gonna support it.
Richard.
Any?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, I'm okay with it.
I was just gonna ask Joe.
You want me to?
What, is it a higher limit, what?
Did you get that in your inch, Bill?
I, I think, but, in, in the recommendation, your motion should, you should consider your motion being that the city council approved the amendment to the personnel handbook, be compliant with the statement that she knew law has to, uh, with the, uh, caveat that, that is consistent with, um, the collective bargaining, uh, unit of the city of Montrose.
It's not good.
Good.
Yeah.
Which, yeah, we've got to clear it up, I get it, I understand.
So is there really one man covered employee, yeah, there's only, really, this policy is literally just for.
Hey, what?
In the sure.
Tendently, who knows?
Uh, you're gonna be contracted, well, what, what about like the manager or the treasurer, I mean, manager, clerk have their own contracts, so.
It's whatever their.
Yeah, whatever your contract signals, supersaves, okay, that's your professional caveat.
Yes, correct, yeah, you could bargain for, and you, and the, the employer can always give more.
Just don't want this policy or whatever to infringe upon their contracts.
Oh, okay.
No, if, if this, then we cannot unilaterally reduce the sick time they already have. If, well, this, then we cannot unilaterally reduce the sick time they already have in.
Sorry. I'm good.
Okay, so are we ready for a vote call, a vote call?
Okay, but you made it, but who made the motion, you made a second, you just said.
Oh, they say that, but no.
Pay, I, I accept this. I'm amending it.
Okay.
I accept this, I'll second, I second what you meant.
Uh, Councilmember Arnold?
Yes.
Mayor Procham, Richard?
Yes.
Councilmember Macha?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoos?
Yes.
Councilmember Pango?
Yes.
Councilmember Heslop?
Yes.
Mayor Banks?
Yes.
Alright, so that concludes our new business. Bid reward purchase. Re, uh, consider a clerk display company lease Christmas decorations. I guess that's something to do on an annual basis, anything for that?
I would like to make a motion that we, uh, renew the lease, uh, from, so a clerk display. what, sorry, a display company, uh, in the amount of sixteen hundred, I'm sorry, one thousand six hundred and eighty dollars, um, for our Christmas decor, and I think they do a lovely job and have for several years.
Yes, I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Pango?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoos?
Yes.
Councilmember Heslop?
Yes.
Councilmember Macha?
Yes.
Councilmember Arnold?
Yes.
Mayor Procham, Richard?
Yes.
Mayor Banks?
Yes.
Moving on to ordinance items, item A, consider adopting zoning ordinance article fourteen, planning unit development HUD district. We need a motion.
We need a motion that we consider zoning ordinance article fourteen, planning unit development HUD district.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Okay.
How did this come to pass as far as being asked for or recommended? How did it origin?
Yes, the origin. Yeah, it, it started back in August, uh, when I sat with Wade-Tremor City Planner, looking at the master plan that the city council adopted in, I think it was in October, November last year. Uh, there is, uh, properties within the city of Montrose that, um, is, trying to make the master plan, I'm sorry, this zoning or HUD is, makes our master plan, uh, consistent with the housing study that we recently adopted and amended our master plan with the housing study. Um, the HUD allows for multi-use, uh, development that has a significant amount of caveats, um, that the planning board in the city still is in the driver's seat, and it has, as was explained, uh, by, um, Adam Young from Wade-Tremor to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission in, I tried to get this to you in September, it just, it just couldn't make the timing. Uh, but the Planning Commission approved, uh, this unanimously with a public hearing. Um, we had a, um, a few, well, I don't know if it was comments related directly to that HUD, uh, there's a, uh, citizen here, sitting here in the second row that we had some good discussion with relative to some of her property, uh, that she owns, but, um, it just brings in line the consistency of our master plan, the zoning that, that the master plan called for, um, and, um, I think that it will help the city of Montrose in its potential development of property that is available, uh, for, uh, for the city with the use of HUD. And again, this is not a NEMBIE thing, this is, it's very strict guidelines relative to, uh, HUD, uh, what the city is, um, authorized to do. And I think, um, it will benefit the city greatly, and the Planning Commission thought so, and they voted for, uh, voted on it unanimously as well. So, that's why it's been punted here, because it's admitting the ordinance, the actual ordinance for your zoning. And, um, that's why we had to have a second public hearing with the city council that's consistent with your city charter, and, um, that's it.
Any further discussion?
So are there any properties or developments that this is, that, that we're pushing this to try and, you know, be able to do something different with it? Or is this just simply from, uh, you know, trying to bring the master plan in line?
I think that's the initial, both of the master plan that you'd be brought along with it.
Yeah, and there, and there's other zoning, uh, there's actual, uh, zoning pieces within the city, your CBD, your GBD. Your current zoning is not, uh, consistent with the master plan necessarily, and I'll be working, uh, probably December, January, February with the Planning Commission or the City Planner to update that zoning as well. Um, there, there might be, uh, potential development, uh, but, you know, I, I'm not Nostradamus and I don't have a.
In, in real estate.
I'm not real estate, but, um, I think, uh, I think it will benefit the city.
Alright, any further discussion? Okay, and we get a roll call.
Councilmember Heslop?
Yes.
Councilmember Arnold?
Yes.
Councilmember Macha?
Yes.
Mayor Procham, Richard?
Yes.
Councilmember Pango?
No.
Councilmember Hoos?
Yes.
Mayor Banks?
Yes.
Alright. Moving right along to ordinance, item B. Consider proposing ordinance number four sixty-one and ordinance amending the city of Montrose Code of Ordinance Article Three entitled General Business License.
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance four, number four sixty-one, general business registration, order to amend the city of Montrose ordinance, uh, four thirty-four, Article Three entitled General Business License.
I second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I, um, I did have concern before, our old ordinance was, I thought there was too much government overreach and that needed to be throttled back, uh, in the previous administration. We had some major disagreements and, um, at times there were folks that were not totally honest with me and I had a very hard time with the change. Glad to bury the hatchet on this one. I'm very, I'm, I'm very hatchet, I don't, I don't like being lied to, like.
Alright, any further? Okay, can I get a roll call?
Councilmember Pango?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoos?
Yes.
Mayor Procham, Richard?
Gratefully, yes.
Councilmember Macha? Um, have you seen? Councilmember Heslop?
Yes.
Councilmember Arnold?
Yes.
Mayor Banks?
Relatively, yes.
Alright, points none. Alright, we are now going to open it back up to a public open session. Purpose of this agenda item is to allow persons to comment, praise, or raise a concern that they feel the city council should address. This is not a forum for debate or for which questions will be answered. The city council will consider all items, questions, prayers, and concerns, and decide they wish to address those items during the agenda items, city council comments. They may also ask admin, administration to address issues raised after the meeting is completed. All persons addressing the city council are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes. Do we have anybody in the public that would like to speak? No? There's no, moving right along. Alright, city council committee reports. Item A, downtown development authority board, DDA, Chairwoman Metra.
Uh, at this meeting, we discussed, um, the society program a little bit and, um, possibly maybe changes that for the future. We also discussed getting, uh, new downtown polling, so we could add, um, and, Mr. Prochak and I, and that was Sam, which is who hired, um, um, APP to help us start executing plans that the DDA consulted. Uh, we're looking at community events, um, we're discussing other grant opportunities, um, in the DDA district. And, um, also, we had the following event, which went really good, um, that the DDA talked with. Um, and we actually, Councilmember Hoos and Mayor Banks came and helped out with that, so, um, that went well and Sam also came, um, Officer Macy was there, so, just see that.
Anything else? Thank you. Item B, election commission, city clerk rush.
No moves.
No moves? Okay. Item C, Tennessee County Community Development Allocation Committee, Mayor Procham.
That'd be me, yep, um, I s, I did email them a report, um, but we had our meeting, um, they always told me to make sure I'm gonna be there, I said, you know, unless I'm dead, I'll be there, because the report. But basically, with the federal government shutdown, at this point HUD is beginning to lay people off. I don't know how long the shutdown can go for, I did ask them, um, about accounting, what effects it's gonna have on accounting, and they say, probably if it runs into spring, then accounting is starting to have issues, and I'm sure that they live there too long. Um, let's see, uh, houses in crisis, I know that's what you talk about, um, there's concerns related to capacity of homeless centers. Who can accommodate them, and also, the, um, Catholic charity's got some of the, um, programs are not going to administer anymore, and they had to move to a different group to administer, but, that pretty much me to ask in this moment.
Item D, Tennessee County Metropolitan Alliance, Mayor Procham.
I went to the meeting, that did not occur because, um, the computer, I unfortunately not have a computer, so I wired up my computer following that meeting, first thing I fired up was, the meeting was canceled, and the dom was removed. It is what it is.
Item E, Tennessee County Small Cities and Buildings Association, Mayor Procham.
Yep, um, and then if, uh, Joe has anything and whatever I may miss, but, um, Sheriff, um, Swanson was there, correct? He was there, I believe he is running for governor at this point, um, and he talked about, um, some of the ongoing with the sheriff department and bringing down the shooter. And, um, hopes he gets elected, and he said he will fight for revenue sharing, because I heard that, um, with the new budget, that there may be some, uh, adjustments to revenue sharing, and Tina, you've been around for it, you know how revenue sharing has not kept up with inflation. And so, what was gonna happen, blah, blah, blah. Anything you'd like to add to it, uh, Mr. Renner?
Uh, no, I think you covered it well, but we did bring up the, uh, DDL library, it is coming back on your small cities agenda, uh, there's concern, um, communities that are, um, contributing to, um, the cost and maintenance of libraries, and the, the DDL has a seventeen million dollar fund now.
Which continually increases.
Which continually increases. Yeah, so, so there's, there's some discussion on that, you know, we'll, we'll see where it goes, but, uh, the village is up next year, I, I don't anticipate any change in the village language. What I'm recommending is that if, um, cities, villages, or townships who are obligated under a contract, have been through years and years, to maintain these libraries, uh, with their DPW, that's revacing carpets, changing lights, unplugging toilets, cleaning sinks. There is a, there is cost to that, and I, I think it's, uh, be amicable if the DDL could come up with a percentage or a dollar figure that can, um, provide some of that general fund money that they have back to the communities to help offset the costs that, that communities are having to leverage, uh, in the maintenance of those, uh, large areas. Um, we'll see. We'll see.
Alright. Next item. No, ours isn't affected, I don't think, because Jenny's involved in it.
Well, there, there, there's nothing been affected, because there hasn't been any discussion with DDL on contracts with communities in doing so.
Right.
Um, it's always been political suicide.
Yep. Uh, Jenny says Littleton, Jenny's, the funding for the library and that stuff is done through Jenny's, it's done through the city township and school shit, right?
Split it up.
Just ask.
Yep.
Alright, item F, Tennessee County Water and Waste Services Advisory Committee, Councilman Heslop.
I wasn't able to attend, Sam did attend, um, but he's not here to see.
I think you brought you something, did you, Joe?
Yeah, I do, just, uh, for a councilman application to the public, uh, per Sam Spence, uh, he attended that meeting in the absence of Mr. Heslop. Um, uh, he wrote here that Ed O'Brien spoke on reducing large peak sewer, iron ore, infill and infiltration, uh, during large rain events. Uh, just so you know, that is a serious issue across, you know, all, all communities, particularly those who have a lot of wastewater treatment plants. Um, last rain event was in April, uh, monitor, monitoring municipalities' waste with meters. Uh, keep below three times daily average during events, uh, penalty for excessive volume. Uh, there, there, again, I, I'm not quite understanding where this comes from in terms of the penalties, but they're discussing, you're talking five to six, five hundred dollars and six thousand, it penalizes for half, half the treatment, half the reimbursement fixed. And then measured rain amounts with seventeen rain, rain gauges through, uh, throughout the county and with the local, uh, news agencies, so they're, pretty hot to try it on that, and, um, although it wasn't listed in here, but, uh, PFAS continues to be, um, a serious discussion, but we'll see how serious the state of Michigan wants to get at the legislative level, uh, to, uh, facilitate, uh, funding for communities, uh, who would have run wastewater plants or are part of the wastewater plant, which is St. Montrose, is, would you ever go to see more of them? So, we'll, we'll see, that's it.
Alright. Item G, planning board, Councilwoman Metra.
There was not a meeting.
There was not a meeting, actually. So, United Beach, nine eleven consortium, Councilman Pango.
No general membership meeting in this one.
Okay. Uh, item I, zoning board of appeals, Councilman Arnold.
And there was no meeting for his own board of appeals. Next one is, that you wrote.
Item J, Montrose area Chamber of Commerce, Councilwoman Hoos.
I did not attend, but I don't think that there was a meeting.
Doesn't surprise me. Alright, well, that concludes that, now we're gonna move on to city manager report.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor, in your council packet I provided, you like to do every month, kind of the breakdown of, uh, activities, there is a tremendous amount of activity. Uh, first I want to, uh, thank our presenters, I want to thank Kim, uh, for being here and giving the, uh, the good bad, uh, in the light. Um, and I appreciate, uh, the hard work, uh, that her and everybody is doing to, uh, get the city, um, um, back to being great again, so, um, just a few other things to want the council to know, uh, that I submitted our final, what we call FSR to MISTHA, relative to the housing study, if you recall back in June or July, I provided the member and the city council identifying some deficiencies that the city has had to had in the forty thousand dollar grant. The city had paid already out of pocket forty thousand dollars for this housing study. I was able to get the housing study through the planning commission, uh, and then amend our master plan and then closing out that grant so the city can get reimbursed, uh, with, uh, with that money, so, that, and I'm, I'm sure you understand the retrofall on MISTHA, uh, grant, that was closed out, uh, we received two hundred and, uh, somewhere between two sixty, two seventy, uh, two hundred and sixty, two hundred and seventy thousand, uh, dollars and we recouped, we wrote a check, they, they reimbursed us, I am trying to get as much as we can reimbursed administrative costs, uh, to the city. The city started this two years ago, unfortunately, the record keeping was poor, and I can't allocate as to what Kim, to even from the finance side, I can't, it's unethical for me to try to go back and say what the previous two or three city managers did, but I have, I have no official legitimate records, so the only thing that I can account for, uh, administratively, was my time and all the effort and time from the treasurer's office to accounts payable, uh, to try to recoup some of those costs. The city was eligible for thirty thousand, we'd be lucky to get maybe five thousand because of that, so, just, just like you know. Um, we continue to build succession plan within the organization with cross-training, it's consistent with your SWOT analysis, it was provided to you last month, and Garrett mentioned the administrative handbook. Uh, speaking with, uh, realtors of various properties, I want to. Uh, speaking with, uh, realtors of various properties, I wanted to, uh, uh, what we described as, um, creating an environment of hospitality, uh, been able to work with other organizations and helping connect other people for some, uh, properties that are dilapidated downtown. I hope that we'll continue. Um, working on the global CIP plan for the city encompassing all areas of the cities, uh, for the next fiscal year in preparations for your budget workshop. It was, it's pretty extensive work, uh, because, um, I think as, as Kim pointed out, relative to, uh, the budget, and I think Mr. Pangol, you or Mr. Vardle, you asked a question about, uh, audit and how come, how come, why and what for, uh, if everything was hunky-dory. Well, when we copy and paste things and we're not really looking at the numbers, um, uh, it doesn't satisfy our needs. It certainly doesn't satisfy, um, uh, rela- areas of, of infrastructure and other areas of the city that needs, uh, attention. So, we're working diligently to, uh, fix that. Uh, receiving training on a new website. You guys ordered a new website. I've been working with them since, since June or July. Uh, and once we get the training done, we will do some beta testing and cross our fingers we'll go live in, probably mid-December or worst case scenario, January third, where the first, first, first week is. I want to let you know that website, um, and your agendas and how it's formatted and how it looks, it will, will set the tone for, uh, us here as council. Right now, we're having to scroll through a hundred and fifty pages. That makes it a little difficult. Uh, I think that you'll find, um, that the agenda that you see on the web, the new website, you'll be able to see these individual items, but be able to, uh, with one click, click on the documentation and not having to scroll through, you know, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty page, very user friendly. Uh, MML refresh the training is available. I encourage our city council members to sign up through the MML website. Now, they are three hour sessions. You can do onsite or, again, through, uh, interactive, uh, web. Uh, Lori did discuss, uh, about the DDA. We are getting really aggressive with the DDA. Um, there are three components that we're working on with the DDA. And I think that is important to the city and I think the city council needs to be aware as you will continue to see, um, a progression of items on your agenda, um, on your new fiscal year, uh, budget planning. We are addressing economic development, uh, where we are, um, revamping our DDA grants so that our businesses can make it more lucrative, uh, and incentivize our businesses and yet keep that accountability piece. Uh, second, uh, uh, the CIP planning involving a number of cap improvements, whether it's, uh, actual hall lighting, uh, that's dilapidated downtown, that we're looking at and working with the township of Montrose by way through, uh, MDA. Uh, three, community that's marketing, sponsoring activities. The DDA has an obligation, uh, to do so. Uh, and, um, it's, it's been described at best as lethargic and we are actively working with our business community, uh, working with philanthropic organizations, uh, to, uh, meet with them and to bring them into the fold. Because when we all go and work together with everybody, we can accomplish, uh, so much more than that with our silvers. Uh, we're working with our staff finally. I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm sorry, Council, I know it's been wait. There's a lot of stuff, but this is the last piece. Working with our staff on rental inspection ordinance, uh, I'm on pace to send letters out to, uh, property owners November third and begin inspections after the new year. We're taking it very slow and methodically. Uh, our processes and building our systems internally through, um, the treasurer's office, through, uh, our city clerk and our secretary, everybody and everybody's hands have to, has to kind of touch this and certainly, uh, prepare our co-enforcement officer for that. We have looked at all the properties. We've looked at, um, with our city secretary, uh, uh, three occasions to validate, um, rental, uh, properties and parcels within your city. Um, and, uh, we hope that with a more streamlined, um, process, uh, where we're not being duplicative in our efforts, uh, we can roll out inspections in a way that, um, can benefit our renters and benefit our, our landlords, uh, for the long term. And, and have, and have good relationships with the individuals. We're not, we're not here to carry a big stick and be jerks, but we want to make sure that our tenants are taken care of and certainly vice versa and support our landlords who've had problems with the council. Uh, that's it, Mayor, thank you.
All right. City Attorney, you still want to?
Uh, yeah, uh, just want to say thank you again, uh, to the council for putting trust in me and hiring me. Uh, this was my absolutely first meeting, um, that was lively. I guess, uh, the council was really good. A couple other firsts. I have a first, uh, pre-trial for June, for Thursday, um, stolen goods, uh, you see, stealing stolen goods case. Um, other than that, uh, I just wanted to say, you know, because I am new, um, you know, one of you that, other than, uh, Mr. Prologge, that I'd ever spoken to before I got here with Mr. Pangol, which was, you know, tech support in my professional, uh, past. If anyone wants to meet with me or, or have a phone call that kind of gets to know me, ask me about my philosophy on things, uh, I'd love to do it. Um, I could provide you my phone number or my, my email, um, and just kind of try to work out a time where we can sit down and meet. Other than that, again, I just wanted to say thank you, um, and I look forward to, to working with you. Welcome aboard, thank you.
All right, moving on to City Council comments. Ryan, anything?
Um, just real briefly, uh, I had originally asked for just a bit of a question and answer period with the new city attorney. Um, just to, so we start building some, uh, relationships and things, I guess. And also because, uh, this has been deemed the period of time when, uh, any of us can ask the city attorney, uh, questions. Um, but due to, uh, uh, council rules, um, we're, uh, limited in our con- of the city attorney. So, this is our moment. So, just as a heads up to anyone else, if you have questions for the city attorney, um, now is your moment. But, that being said, I, I do want to welcome you, sir. Um, I'm, you know, pleased with what I've seen so far. Have you been, do you have a copy of our?
I read it.
You're, you're on it. So, just wanted, I guess, make sure that you had one of those and just a couple other basic questions just to, uh, kind of, you know, get a feel where you're at and just so the citizens, uh, can hear as well. But, can you just describe a little bit, kind of, what is your understanding of your role as the city attorney?
Sure. Uh, number one is the protection of the city, uh, making sure that it's by its own charter, state law, even the federal constitution, uh, things like that. So, uh, making sure that the, um, the council, number one, doesn't take any action that's gonna lead to legal consequences. Um, I also see my role as kind of edifying, uh, somewhat arcane things for either the council or the public in general. Um, you know, things like ground field plants are not kind of kitchen table talk, but, um, it's, it's important. You know, these are zoning, um, uh, ground fields, general business, you know, the th- the things that are on, uh, a city council agenda are not always the, uh, most exciting things, but they are important to people's lives. Um, and I think sometimes, uh, things get too jargony, too, too lost in, in legalese. Um, so I do also see my, my role as using clear and concise language in order to allow the, the council to make the best decisions for the people who elected them, but also to help explain concepts, uh, to the general public that they might not, uh, necessarily know about.
Okay. Um, and just, I guess, uh, can you explain what the duties of the city attorney is? As it pertains to things like ordinances, regulations, contracts, bonds and other sections?
Sure. So, I mean, in terms of ordinance and resolutions, that is something that I, uh, need to review, uh, beforehand in order to make sure that the city is in fact following, uh, its own charter, policy, blah, um, just kind of doing things that make sense. Um, I don't have, uh, a ton of subject medical expertise in bonds. I tend to tell my clients that I should refer to a bond attorney on those matters. Um, contracts, uh, a lot of, a lot of contracts are fairly boilerplate. So, what I tend to do is review them. Uh, anything that I think would take a, uh, councilperson by surprise in a contract, I, I tend to pull out and say, hey, you know, I'll watch out for this, something like, uh, sometimes contracts I work on limited damages, uh, liquidated damages provisions, where you have to pay some obscene amount of money if you break the contract. Uh, that would be something that I would call up to the board. Uh, generally, if I don't see anything out of the ordinary legally, um, I will just sort of say, I don't see any legal issues. Um, I am always happy if someone points me to a contract and says, you know, hey, can you break down exactly what this is? I will do that. Um, I don't do that as a matter of course. One, is I'm usually known by the hour and I, I don't, unless I'm asked, I'm not gonna kind of put those hours in and ask you to pay me to do that. Um, but if, uh, you know, especially if someone says, well, you know, what exactly is this clause? Um, I've seen that as my one way of explaining that, making sure that everyone in the council knows what they're voting on before they vote on them. Um, so, I do assume a level of knowledge of the council member, the sort of an average, uh, educated legal consumer, um, but anything that's outside that realm, uh, I feel it's gonna be a birth down and explain. I think I covered everything. If there's something else that I didn't mention, I can.
Basically, the, the review process, but the way you understand it is that if you see something that looks out of the ordinary, you know, that you're gonna work it to our attention.
Correct.
It looks, you know, something looks like, oh, boy, that seem, that pay rate seems awfully crazy or, you know, this time period or whatever, you, any of these legal issues. I, I, of course, I'm not a lawyer, so I would depend on you, uh, sir, but, you know, that's important. If, if, uh, because for a contract to be legally valid, um, you know, we have to follow things like charter rules. Would you agree with that? That's it. All right. So, um, and I guess just welcome aboard. But, uh, my other question is, what is your schedule planned to be here for future meetings?
I intend to be here at every regular scheduled meeting, special meetings. Uh, I have tomorrow for flushing. I, I don't give twenty-four hours notice. I pretty much always can attend. Um, I've missed one board meeting across my municipalities because of illness and happened to be last month, unfortunately. Um, other than that, um, I attend whatever. I have, uh, two municipalities that conflict with each other but do not conflict with this account, so I, I do not foresee any reason why I would not be here. Um, if my wife's scheduled for vacation and I don't realize it's the week of a meeting, I'll get coverage. But other than that, I, I tend to physically be here.
Very good. I, I think that would help, you know, build, uh, build a relationship a little bit. And also some of us are, you know, potentially counting on you to be here, um, because we've run into things even when we don't expect them, but it seemed like, boy, it'd be a really good idea to have, you know, a legal opinion on, on this sort of thing where, you know.
Yeah, again, I, I see my role as, uh, for, especially for the meetings, as I review everything in the packet. If anything comes out that I'm worried about, it's something that I'm gonna, during the agenda, I would, I would, I would say, if I accept it here, you know, with the council permission, you know, and say, hey, maybe you don't want to sign this fifty-year contract.
All right, well, that's great. I guess that was my last question for that. I, I am excited, uh, uh, Mr. Manager, to hear about the, uh, the rental property, uh, inspection. That sounds, uh, that sounds very positive. And I don't have any other questions.
Um, I'm just happy to, um, put the, you know, that, and thank you to everybody who, um, worked for that. And my final is that it is fair, um, and equal for everybody, so I'm happy about that. And I just wanted to say that there is a three family event, um, Sunday, November ninth at one P.M. It's at The Gathering, which is next to Amity Seven Pizza, but they were just here, um, so that's the only, uh, place I know of that's going on in kind of, in the world, I see.
Uh, interesting.
I would to thank manager for which, uh, the, the long work you're doing and the long communication and keeping me in the loop and talk everybody in the loop of the long zones, or of courses and what. With tax nonsense structures and things like that. I really do appreciate that because I work a lot and I'm either in my house or at work, probably eighty-five percent of the time. And so, keeping me apprised on things, I really do appreciate it. It's good for the, it's good for Montrose.
Uh, well?
Uh, a couple things. Uh, one, I'd like to thank Mr. Richard for putting up, well, the three pumpkins that were out there and, um, available. That was, that was really nice. Um, and I would like to, uh, for the DDA thing about the, the planning of the community thing, uh, back before the dark days of COVID. Uh, we had a, uh, somebody from the university and she was talking about, um, she ran the communication department and she said they would love at some point to find a city that would allow their advanced classes with supervising or, uh, other things, um, come up with a marketing plan, advertising plan, development plan for a city. Uh, of course, you don't have to adopt anything, but just a study and all this kind of stuff and it would be free.
Do you still have that contract?
Assuming it was eight years ago, I've been a guest and the person's probably not there anymore, but it might be something worth looking into. Um, free is good and, and, uh, and getting a relationship with one of the largest universities in the state could be beneficial in other ways too, eventually.
Mark, I'm gonna pass him though. Just wanna, each councilperson gets one. Basically, um, there was some, there was some confusion on the contract. I've already talked to the manager. I just want to clarify here, so that's what I do, I'm the best here. But basically, um, there was some confusion why I voted for a contract and then following the, and I voted against it. And basically, the contract I'm sending out, handed out, showed the ninety days, uh, seven paid, and it was jumped up to a hundred and twenty. That's why it caused confusion, so it just didn't pop out of my head. It's just, this is what I was originally given and I just assumed and now that's on me. I assumed that that was what was in the packet. I should have looked to make sure, but I did not, so that's on me. But that's why I didn't vote in that fashion and I wanted to clarify here that, yes, I'm, I think I'm the second oldest person on this board, I think I am.
No, you gotta be top.
You gotta be top. But I'm, I'm, I'm not going to see now yet, um.
You mean it?
This question, if he asks, if he asks a board, I think I am. Um, the pumpkins, that was, um, I grew them on the community garden and I found that pumpkins and squash are all like crazy out here. And I always liked the pumpkins, so I let Joe know about it and I dropped them off. I think next year, I'm just gonna grow pumpkins and squash.
I've got a lot of pumpkin.
And, yeah, pumpkins, just gonna grow pumpkins and squash and I'm like, I'm on a, um, nice Columbus. I might grow a garden over here with them that has more of the tomatoes and stuff like that where it's a lot closer to my house, so I can pay more attention to it than what's way over here, so. But it was a pleasure in dropping them off and, uh, the, um, Mexican food was good. I, it's sad, well, I didn't get, I didn't get sick. Usually I get sick on Mexican, but it was good, so never mind, I suppose. I just wanted to clarify here by myself and I think a couple other council people might have voted when they did, so.
Uh, I'm just gonna take the final and I want to thank everybody tonight for an excellently ran question and proposed idea of meeting. It, it went really well. I was happy to be part of it tonight. Thank you. All right. Um, other than that, I was gonna mention Dennis's, he's, he's got down there at, uh, The Gathering also. The one up here that we had, I mean, Dan Hill, I was on the assumption that he provided something, but he provided it for a cost. Haywagon, Haywagon, which transported people back and forth from the city to the museum. And they went in, the museum people were staffed and they were giving candy to the kids and everything, so it really went over really nicely. But it was a good thing. I'd like to see that happen more often. The more times we can draw people into the city involving people like The Gathering, Dennis and them, they need to be involved every time we happen to find them as much as we can. But it, it's really taken shape. I like it. I think that's it for me.
What should we do, Dirk?
If you get us
We're connected.
All right, if we get a
Rock off.